Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Planning Commission meeting on March 14th to order. Thank you all for being here. Planning Commission is a body that's appointed by the Town Council to make decisions regarding land use policy, applications, developments, anything from a second-story addition to a large housing development to a business office. And we do so based on input from our speakers, based upon town policy and discussion that we have among ourselves and by reports that we get from the staff. I'll give you a little bit more explanation about the rules as we go along, but essentially, an applicant and everyone with the applicant gets five minutes to talk. Then anyone who wants to speak on an item gets three minutes, and we go from there. And then the Planning Commission will make a decision and make a motion on the particular project. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Bailey to do a roll call.
Commissioner Sayoc?
Here.
Commissioner Bourgeois?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Here.
And Chair Jensen?
Here. And would you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
..............................
The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from February 8, 2012. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
I move to approve as-is.
Commissioner Bourgeois moves to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Commissioner Sayoc?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to actually abstain because I'm recused off the main item in that, and I think it's appropriate for me to abstain from voting on those minutes, so I'm going to do that. The next item on our agenda is to summarize written communications that we've had on particular items that are on the agenda that have been received by us just before tonight's meeting. And we've gotten a desk item on item number three, which is a conditional use permit, application U-12-001 Mike's Bikes. We did receive that electronically earlier this afternoon, so if anyone had a chance to read that by electronics, that's great. If not, we have it before us. Also, item six, a letter from a neighbor regarding that project. And am I missing any other written communications? We do have one requested continuance tonight, which is item number five, 1-6-8-2-8 Kennedy Road. The request is to continue the matter until April 25, 2012. Do I have any motion with respect to that item? Commissioner Erickson?
I would so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bourgeois, thank you. It's moved and seconded to continue to April 25th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And the next item is Subcommittee Reports. All members of the Commission, in addition to serving on the Planning Commission, also serve on various subcommittees. Those could be the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, which listens to potential developments coming to town and gives advice to a developer. It could be the General Plan, which talks about, among other things, the North Forty, or Housing Element, things like that, the Historic Preservation Committee. And all of us serve on those committees. I do happen to know that there was a General Plan Committee meeting tonight, and can I ask the Chair of the General Plan Committee, Commissioner Bourgeois, to report on that?
Sure, thank you. The General Plan Committee met earlier this evening. We were discussing the Courthouse site, which is one of the sites in our housing element that is designated for affordable housing. We were in the process of developing affordable housing overlay zones to direct the potential affordable housing developments on those sites, and we were talking about things such as setbacks, building heights, lot coverage, affordability ratios, et cetera. So it's a very lively discussion, and we will be continuing that discussion at our next meeting.
And for any of you that are interested, all the Subcommittee meetings are open to the public. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Before that meeting, we had a Conceptual Development Advisory Committee meeting. We considered a proposed development on Alberta Way. At the end of Alberta Way, there are two or more large office buildings, and the owner is proposing to tear those buildings down and to put in housing. So that was discussed. At this stage, it's very conceptual, and obviously, there are no decisions. The members of the CADA-C simply expressed their opinions on the proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Were there any other Subcommittee meetings? Thank you. The next thing that we do at our Planning Commission meetings is we allow time, three minutes, for anyone who's in the audience who wishes to speak to the Commission regarding an item that is not on the agenda. So if you are here with respect to a specific item, wait for that item to be called. If you would like to talk about something that is not on tonight's agenda, now's the time to do that. And I do actually have one card, Barbara Doxson. And Ms. Doxson, you have three minutes to talk to us about your item.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Barbara Doxson, and I live at 239 Marchmont Drive.
Excuse me, ma'am. Is your mic on? Because we're having trouble hearing you. Pull it down toward you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Is that... Okay. My name is Barbara Doxson, and I live at 239 Marchmont Drive. I'd like to talk to the Commission about problems in our neighborhood because of Hillbrook School's past and likely future violations of its CUP. A wonderful story about Hillbrook School's history appeared in yesterday's Weekly Times. It described the beautiful country day school that my own children briefly attended. For many years, Hillbrook has been a positive presence in our neighborhood. However, recently, the situation has drastically changed. Last summer, neighbors noticed unusually heavy traffic going up and down the streets all day long. It turned out that the school had more than 900 children on-site, way above its CUP Condition Four limit of 315, had no carpool program in place, thus violating Condition Three, allowed pickup and drop-off at any time during the day, violating Condition Twelve, and allowed third-party use of the campus, violating Condition Ten. This was last summer, but what I really want to point out is the many ways in which, despite protests from neighbors, Hillbrook plans to grow in the future. I recently read the school's strategic plan 2015, and what I saw alarmed me. This plan, already being implemented, will dramatically increase neighborhood traffic. The strategic plan would expand the student population by 32%, but the projected growth would not end there. The plan would also increase faculty and staff by at least 25% and turn Hillbrook into a conference center, teacher-training center, source of recreation department-style after-school activities, and summer campsite for community use. All this means traffic, traffic, and more traffic for our neighborhood, which is already inundated with cars during significant periods each day. Hillbrook's strategic plan states that new after-school and summer programs will, quote, "enable the school to diversify its revenue streams." The school wants to make more money. Hillbrook is a business and has a right to increase revenue, but the school should not be allowed to increase revenue at the expense of the neighborhood. Hillbrook will add programs and traffic and continue to violate or sidestep its CUP unless steps are taken. For example, a major part of the new teacher-training program will, quote, "be educational conferences that will make Hillbrook the site for important conversations." These conferences will generate unknown amounts of traffic, not countenance by the CUP. Hillbrook sits on property zoned for residential use. It predates most homes around it, but currently is a non-conforming use of its site. Conferences, large summer camp programs, and traffic-generating after-school programs are not appropriate for this residential location. When the Hillbrook issue comes before you, we urge you to remind Hillbrook of the place it once... of the kind of place it once was and should continue to be, a small country day school that offers a fine education while following CUP conditions and respecting the need of the neighborhood to limit traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doxson. You almost made it there. Ms. Bailey, is there a date yet for the Hillbrook application?
No, there's not. And the Hillbrook School, regarding the summer school program, they will not be operating with the same vendor that they used last year. So they will not be doing that summer school program.
I neglected to remind everyone, if you do have an electronic device, they can interfere with our microphones. So if you'd either put them on silent or turn them off for the time that you're in here. I know turning them off can be a struggle for many people, but at least to put them on silent, we would appreciate it. Right now, I'm sitting with no yellow cards, and I can't imagine that none of you want to speak. So if you'd like to speak on an item on the agenda, if you'd hand your card to our clerk, that way I know to call your name before the item comes up, and that we can be much more efficient if you turn your card in. Please do that, because then you become part of our record. We know who you are, and we do keep minutes, so we would very much appreciate that if you take the time to do that as we go through some preliminary Next item on our agenda is our consent calendar. We currently have three items on, but I'm going to split them up because one of our commissioners is recused from item one based upon the location of her residence. So I'm just going to call for a motion, if there is one, on our item number one, which is 220 Carlton Avenue, Live Oak Manor Park Master Plan, Conditional Use Permit Application U-12-003. Does anyone want to pull that? I should say, with our consent calendar, what we do is there is an item that's been determined by the staff that is generally not controversial, that meets all of the conditions of the town policies and ordinances, that can be approved essentially on a single motion without a public hearing. So we generally take those without a public hearing, and we make a motion on them. However, if anyone on the Commission or in the audience wants to pull an item from the consent calendar to have a full public hearing on it, you can do that, and we'll hear it in its normal course. So does anyone on the Commission or in the audience want to pull item one, Live Oak Manor Park Master Plan, from our consent calendar? Seeing no one, I'll look for a motion on that item. Commissioner Talisfor?
Yeah, I move that. We approve Conditional Use Permit U-12-003, requesting approval for the Live Oak Manor Park Master Plan on property zoned RC. Property owner is the town of Los Gatos, applicant, project planner, and the findings, I think, are included within that... Okay. Oh, wait a minute, I guess I better find those.
Oh, you can just say that you incorporate the findings.
Okay, and please incorporate the findings. So that's it.
Okay. Let's move for approval by Commissioner Talisfor. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bourgeois. Commissioner Sayoc, would you like to make a statement before we call for the vote?
No, just that I'm recusing myself because I do live within 500 feet of the said property.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So it passes six to nothing with one abstention. Commissioner Sayoc? One recusal, sorry. Items two and three are also on our consent calendar, and the first one is 13 North Santa Cruz Avenue, Conditional Use Permit Application... Permit Modification, I should say, U-11-019. It concerns a property and business that we know of as Mike's Bikes, and the request is to expand into a space that is currently occupied by a hair salon. And item number three is 201... I'm sorry, that was item number two. I meant, that's item number three I just described. I really apologize. That's Conditional Use Permit Modification U-12-001 is what I just described, Mike Spikes. Number two, 13 North Santa Cruz Avenue, Conditional Use Permit Modification U-11-019, is to modify the operating hours of the business that's known as Happy Yogurt. It's going to change to a bakery, and they are requesting to change their operating hours to essentially operate... Open earlier. I am going to take those together, and I know that Commissioner Smith has a clarification question regarding item number... and I'm going to get it wrong again. Item number three. But aside from that, is there anyone in the audience or on the Commission that wants to pull either item two or item three? Happy... Well, it's not hap... It is Happy Yogurt now, but it's going to be Amor Patisserie, or Mike Spikes from the consent calendar. Okay, seeing no one, I know Commissioner Smith, you have a clarification. You'd like to get settled on item three. Would you please do that?
Yes, I do have the question of staff, and of course, reserve my right to pull the item if I don't feel that I have enough clarification. My question, and I actually had posed this, I'm not sure if I should pose this to Ms. Savage, Ms. Bailey, or the town attorney. So I'll pose it, and then one of the three of you can decide to answer it. Mike Spikes came to Los Gatos as a non-formular retailer. They are now a formula retailer because they have more than seven stores. They occupy one space. They want to expand that space into a non-retail space, and therefore, that space would then become formula retail. So my question, which I did not first understand the clarification for it, are we now locking in that corner, that address, those two addresses, for formula retail forever? And I believe, Ms. Bailey, that's how I phrased it to you before as well.
If the use is approved pursuant to Condition Number Four, it would be a formula retail business, but it is solely for the sale of bicycles and bicycle accessories. So a different type of formula store could not occupy that space under this use permit. If another formula retailer wanted to go in that business that didn't sell bikes or bikes accessories, it would require a new use permit.
Is that answered your question?
Which would require approval of the Planning Commission.
With... They also need their own Conditional Use Permit, but in terms of the landlord, his two buildings now have been approved for formula retail for at least bikes. That's what I understand you're saying to me.
Right, for a bicycle store and bicycle accessories.
And at this point, he's not approved for any formula retail in those two locations. I'm just talking about property.
Well, technically, Mike's Bikes is now, in its existing space, is a formula retail, but it doesn't have a use permit.
As a formula retailer?
Correct.
Can I just ask a follow-up clarification? And it doesn't currently have a formula retail Conditional Use Permit, because at the time, it came into that space, it was not qualifying under our definition of formula retail, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, does that satisfy you, or such that we can vote on the consent calendar, or do you want to pull it?
What I wonder... I can't wonder. I have to... The clarification is there, Ms. Bailey. I just am concerned that we're setting a precedent for formula retailers to take over another large corner. And I understand what you're saying is it's for bikes only. But it, you know, it doesn't feel like that's clear enough.
Could... Ms. Bailey, would you read the condition?
The approval is for a regional formula retail business solely for the sale of bicycles and bicycle accessories.
So as I understand that, that's... Any other type of formula retail would require a full evaluation under the formula retail process. Is that right?
Any other type, correct.
Any other type, right. Okay.
Just going to ask one more question. But hypothetically, toys are us bicycles could come into that corner.
If they only sold bis... and bicycle accessories, nothing else?
At that corner.
Correct. Well, at the space that's subject to the use permit.
Right. Okay, thank you.
We seem to have lots of other clarification questions, and Commissioner Erickson had his finger up first, so I'm going to call on him, then Commissioner Talisfor, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
Chair, I would suggest that I would like to enter a motion to adopt item number two, and at the same time, pull item number three from the consent calendar if we're going to extend the conversation on it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to... Should we just split those? Let's split the motions. Since we've had no discussion about item two, and it's still... Commissioner Erickson, can we split your motions, such that you make a motion to approve item two, and then we go to item three?
Well, I'll just request... I don't know that we need a motion, right? It just requires a request, so I'm formally requesting the Chair to pull item three from the consent calendar.
That's fine.
Then I will enter a motion to accept item number two as a consent item.
Okay, is there... Item three is pulled. So now we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Erickson to approve the consent calendar, which now consists of item number two, the extended hours for Happy Yogurt. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. So now we'll move to item number three in its normal course, and I think that in order to do that, I need to ask if the applicant or representative of Mike's Bikes happens to be here. I hope you are. Okay. And if they're not here, Ms. Bailey, what happens? Because they don't have an opportunity to be heard on this.
Well, if we can answer your questions, you might not need the applicant here to respond.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think the limitation that you read is pretty clear. I have a different question, and that is Mike's... We approve Mike's Bicycles for our location, not as a retail, but as a bicycle seller. It was not a retail, and that Conditional Use Permit is for that use. Now they want to expand into a non-retail, converting it thus into a retail. And in addition to simply being a retail, it will be a formula retail. I guess the question I have is... Well, two things. If a user wants to revert the second space back to a non-retail use, they would have to go through some procedure to do that, I assume, because we have policies on reversion from retail to non-retail. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, on the first, since it was approved not as a retail, because it wasn't a retail, is this modification in any way changing the original space? I mean, I can see how the second space is being granted to a retail use, whereas the first space was not. The point of that simply being, if we can narrow down Commissioner Smith's worry, it might be helpful, and I don't know. Is this a modification essentially which will change what we did as to the first space?
Before that question gets answered, just to clarify, I saw some people looking a little confused. Commissioner O'Donnell, what you're... We... The word, I think, that you weren't inserting was, we didn't approve it as a formula retail.
Correct.
Obviously, we approved it as a retail use, but not a formula retail. So now the question is, now that we're doing something that it exists as a formula retail, what's the process?
Yeah, and conceptually, it seems to me... I'm not sure how we're doing it, but conceptually, you could say they're asking for a use permit for this second space as a formula retail. We don't need to revisit... I don't know this. But arguably, we don't need to revisit the first CUP. But that's all hypothetical, because I'm asking, what are we doing? Are we revisiting?
There is no Conditional Use Permit for Suite A, the existing space. No Conditional Use Permit was required. Therefore, this Conditional Use Permit would cover both the Suite A and Suite B for a formula retail bicycle shop.
I guess I'd ask the attorney if that's necessary. The first space doesn't need anything from us. That space's use has not changed. The person who operates it is only coming before us as a formula retail for purposes of a new space. But it isn't clear to me why we have to issue a Conditional Use Permit for an existing use that would only have a Conditional Use Permit if it had been a retail then, I mean, a formula retail.
If Mike Spikes was coming into just Suite A today, they would require a Conditional Use Permit.
I understand that, but they're not. That's the point.
What triggered their application for both Suites A and B is that they're expanding their use. So it is impacting the use of both Suites A and B, is the way they filed the application. If you're asking, could it have been somehow compartmentalized and repackaged? I think that's a question we can't answer, but the application is for the expansion of the business into both... It's existing in A, and it's expanding into B.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you. All right, that answers my question, thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions? Commissioner Talisfor.
I understand what Commissioner Smith is concerned about, so I'm wondering, under the condition four, under use, where it says the approval is for a regional formula retail business solely for the sale of bicycles and bicycle accessories, is there a way we could name this store, and then that would be it, so we wouldn't have to be concerned about another formula store coming in, chain formula store coming in? You see where I'm going with that?
I would just like to remind the commission that a conditional use permit runs with the land, not with the occupant.
So, Commissioner Talisfor, the answer is no.
Got that.
Are there other, other questions from the commission? Because we've pulled this from the consent calendar, it is a formal public hearing. So, if anyone's become fascinated by this issue while you've been sitting there, even though you weren't here for this, you may fill out a card and come and talk to us about it for three minutes if you'd like to. Would anyone like to do that? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to now look to the commission for a motion, and we will, as I reminded you in my preliminaries, we're going to do motion, then discussion, not discussion, then motion. Commissioner Smith? Oh, I thought you had your hand up, okay. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I will make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, and I'm just looking for the findings at the moment. Okay, the findings are set forth on page six of the report and exhibit two. I would, we would find that the proposed cap project is categorically exempt under the section cited, that the required findings are made pursuant to the requirements of section 292190 of the Town Code. That's also set forth in exhibit two, that the finding of section four, capital B, of the redevelopment plan for the Central Los Gatos Redevelopment Project meets the use set forth in the Town General, General Plan, and that we would approve the conditional use permit with the conditions contained in exhibit three.
Let's move for approval by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second? Commissioner Seac?
I'll second the motion.
Any commissioners want to make a comment? We have a motion for approval. It's moved and seconded. Any comments or questions regarding the motion? Commissioner Smith?
I do want to make a comment. Because the applicant is not here to answer questions, and part of the, the use of the new space, which was a personal services space, and now will be turned to retail, is, as I understand the application, going to be the equivalent of a fitness studio, which sounds like personal services to me, and then they're also going to have some of these high-end bicycles for sale. I, I for one, am not going to support the motion because I don't have Mike's Bikes here to ask them the questions that I have about the use of their space. So, that's my comment.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to one. Commissioner Smith opposing. And we're now going to move on to item number four, which is Architecture and Site Application S-11-05915220 Oak Ridge Way. Planning Commission has heard this item previously. So, the first thing I'll do is, bearing in mind that all of us have visited the site and read the report, ask Ms. Savage if there's anything to add to her written report.
Nothing to add to the written report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Savage. Are there any questions for Ms. Savage from the commission? Okay, seeing none. So, now we're going to begin our public hearing. The applicant and/or the applicant's representatives have an aggregate up to five minutes to speak to us regarding the application. Following that, then any member of the public that wants to talk about this particular application may take up to three minutes for their comments, and then the applicant will be invited back to respond to any questions or concerns that have been raised by other members of the public. And for that purpose, they're, they have three minutes. We know that you're all very interested, or you wouldn't be here, so please be very respectful of everyone else speaking about a particular item and what their opinions may be, and please direct your comments to the commission. I'm sure that all of you are going to be very respectful of the process, but I just feel like I should remind everyone. And if you've heard a comment made, consider whether or not you need to reiterate that comment or not. You're certainly welcome to if you'd like to. So, is the applicant on item four here, or his representative? Would you come forward, please, and introduce yourselves?
Good evening. My name is Rick R. Dizone. I'm at 200 Winchester Circle in Los Gatos, and the applicant, Mr. Hertzick, Robert Hertzick, is here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spalding, who's the architect, unfortunately, was called away, is on a flight overseas, so he apologizes for his absence, but I'm here on his behalf. Again, my name is Rick R. Dizone. I'm not only a very good, longtime friend of the Hertzicks, I'm a realtor and have been here for 23 years and lived in Los Gatos since 1964. Also, had the benefit of being involved in this property, as I represented the Hertzicks in the purchase. I also represented at the time, the Lazaruses, who owned at the time, the estate behind on the Sunny Ridge, and was part of the sale and was a listing agent on the sale of the guest house next door. So, I feel I have some knowledge and maybe can answer some questions for you if they come up. Okay, thank you. So, I'd like to read some comments and things for us. So, the direction of the commission was to reduce the, you know, mass and bulk of the house. The primary driver of this perception of mass and bulk is the proposed second floor. So, we have endeavored to make the second floor as small as possible. The need is to keep three bedrooms upstairs, as the Hertzicks have two small, seven-year-old sons, and the Neathford have three bedrooms and two baths. We've reduced the floor area as much as possible while still keeping this wish. When you compare the original proposal and the revised plans, you can see that all the bedrooms upstairs have been made smaller, and the large walk-in closet has been removed, as well as one full bathroom and the laundry room. The second floor has been reduced by 371 square feet. The floor has been, the twelve, second floor has been reduced by width of 12 feet and a depth by four feet. The overall height of the house has also been reduced by 18 inches. The first floor has been reduced by 101 square feet, and the basement by 73 square feet, for an overall total far reduction of 545 square feet. The first floor width of the building has been reduced by three feet. The first floor height has been reduced by six inches. The north side setback has been increased to 17 feet. The south side setback has been increased to six feet, 16 feet, six inches. When you remove the accessory pool bathroom and the basement square footage for the comparison sake, the revised visible square footage would be 3,717 square feet. Our revised plan is much smaller and lower. Second floor is about the same width and height as our northern neighbor's house at 17050 Wildway. We have also moved the front of the house back five feet from 30, 30 feet to 35 feet. It appears that four out of our five immediate neighbors do not have an issue with the size of our house. The only one that we are aware of are the trips at 15,000 Oak Ridge. Please see their peek-a-boo view from their front porch in the winter with no leaves. The architectural view thought it was a good fit for this changing neighborhood. There was an issue with water and drainage, that's been addressed. I believe you have documentation of that, but when the Lazaruses divided their lot and created the lot in question, as well as the guest house as separate parcels, they put in a complete drain system, and I believe you have documentation on that. If not, we can address those specifics. Privacy concerns from the neighbor in the back, the new owner of what was, what is the Sunny Ridge estate, was the Lazarus property, were proposing on our landscaping plan to plant 14 trees along the rear and north property line, as shown on the revised landscaping plans. They're very, these are very attractive, clean, green and yellowish and evergreen trees, ideally suited for this, as they grow 30 feet in height and 10 to 15 feet wide. There was a question regarding the easement. There are no proposed structures or trees in this easement. The required onsite parking is outside of the easement. The parking consists of three inside and two in front of the garages for a total of five parking spaces. The Hertzicks have lived and worked here, Steve, excuse me, Robert Hertzick has lived here in Los Gatos for 33 years. Elaine has lived and, with Robert, in their present house on Blossom Manor. Elaine's been there for 24 years. They have two twin boys of seven years old, Jonathan and Matthew, who were born here and involved in the local schools, as well as Los Gatos sports teams. They have always been involved with their neighbors and look forward to building their dream home in the beautiful Oak Ridge Way neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. R. Dizone. Let me see if there's questions for you. Commissioners, are there questions from Mr. R. Dizone, or Mr. Hertzick? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to open it up to members of the public. Right now, I only have one card, and that's from Mary Keith Osborne.
Hi, Mary Keith Osborne, 17051 Wildway, Los Gatos. I have been a 72-year resident of the Sona Heights subdivision, in which the project is located. I'm aware of the state requiring cities to add more housing and, and the need for revenue. However, building a house on the lot under discussion is stupid. Building the house will impact the rural nature of the subdivision, as it will stop the flow of many thousands of year-old seasonal creek that flows through my property. The creek brings me great joy every winter to see it renew its flow. The ancient, up to 400-year-old valley oaks, buckeye, and live oaks that live along the banks rely on the creek's surface and groundwater it leaves behind. The creek's flow add value to my property. Even the developers of the 1908 Vona Heights subdivision recognized the creek's value, where the creek intersected the road, redwood culverts were built. One still exists on my property. Subsequent owners of the property along the creek acknowledged its importance. None tried to contain its flow to a pipe, except under a hedge and driveway or a parking lot. The stream was daylighted where possible. You are defying state law by, by draining a vernal pool's excess water, mud, sand, and stones to an already overburdened county sewer system. Please shelve this thoughtless project, I beg you. And it, you have not addressed the tremendous amount from the neighbors, the Okas, to the south of this project. There, eight years ago, there were four truckloads of stones and rock that came through the pipe into the 17050 Wildway yard. Four truckloads had to be taken out of there. There, you have not addressed the, the pipes, the, the drain pipes from the Okas property, and that is, oh, I don't have it down here. Anyway, that, I just, I'm, I'm going to be so sad, because I just love that creek coming through my yard, and it's come through ever since I was a little kid. And there's no reason to spoil the, the stuff, okay.
You have 30 seconds.
You have 30 seconds, that's what the, what the yellow means. But you don't need to say anything if you don't want to. However, we need to see if there's, anyone has any question for you, Ms. Osborne?
[laughing]
Yeah, so, if you're going to talk, just stay for a second to see if there's any questions before you walk away.
Did you get my, all my, my pictures?
We did, thank you very much, but we just wanted to make sure there weren't any additional questions for you. And I don't see any, so thank you very much. I do not have a card from anybody else on this item, which is 15220 Oak Ridge Way. If you'd like to speak, now's the time. I don't see anyone else, so, Mr. R., Mr. R. Dizone or Mr. Hertzick, you're welcome to come and talk to us again. You don't have to. Let me know whether you want to or not. I'm, you have, you can stand up and wave.
If there's anything we might need as a rebuttal, to them.
Wait a minute, Mr. Hertzick, if you're going to talk, you do, you do the talking.
Yeah, excuse me. Well, they can just refer to the H.T. Harvey Associates, you know, letter, because they did a study up there and came up with a little different conclusion.
And commissioners, we all received that in our packet and read it, correct? Okay, are there any questions regarding that, or Commissioner Seac?
Actually, thank you for that letter. I don't have a question on that, but one of the issues at our last hearing was landscape screening and the adequacy of that, and one of the requests was that you work with your neighbor behind. I'm assuming it's been resolved since there have been no other issues brought forward, but just wanted confirmation.
Yes, so we presented, as shown on the plan, we have, you know, the aprunus carolineas all along the back there, you know, with, with screen, any view or any issue with privacy. And they're much lower, we're kind of low, and then looking down, I don't see any issue.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Talisfor, is that for Mr. Hertzick or Mr. R. Dizone?
Probably Mr. Hertzick.
Okay.
Thank you for including the landscape plan, so that we could see what was going to be going in there. I appreciate that. But I did have a question. You're, you removed the 36-inch pine, and, and I, that's, you know, fine, but what I was wondering is if you, there were plans to possibly replace that in the front somewhere that would, and the reason I'm bringing that up is that to, it might help to soften the, you know, your house as it's put in place, and somehow maintain a little bit of that rural character that is known there. And I know, I know it's a new house, but-
It's a beautiful street, it really is, and I understand that. That, you know, that pine-
No, no, I don't, that's fine, you took the pine out. I'm just wondering if you could replant perhaps a 24-inch box. I, I don't know if you've thought about that, but it certainly would help possibly to soften, you know, your new home and make it look more of the general area.
You mean in the front?
In the front.
Yes, I, this is, my wife and I would consider that, definitely.
Okay, that would be, and you could work with the staff on-
Yeah, because that one was dying, it was falling over.
I, I totally believe you.
Yeah, I know.
That's fine about the pine.
The town, you know, ever condemned it.
Okay, that, and that's great, but I just think that it might really soften your home and help to place it and keep it more in character. And I know it's referred to as a changing area, but I think that that would definitely help keep it rural in character.
You're like, can I address a changing area?
It's not important, I mean, not now, anyway. So, I don't know if we'd make that a condition, or would I ask the staff?
Let me, before you do that, let's see if there's any other questions for either Mr. Hertzick or Mr. R. Dizone. I don't see any. Mr. R. Dizone, did you want to wrap up, or you?
No, we're complete, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to then close the public portion of the hearing on this matter, and look to the commission for a motion, and then we'll have discussion. Commissioner Seac?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I wanted to start off and thank Mr. Hertzick and your family for making the accommodations that we asked for at the last meeting. It sounds, it's always, it's always pleasant when the neighbors can resolve some of these issues on their own. The one outstanding issue in terms of the hydrology and the geology of the area, I'm quite comfortable with the H.T. Harvey letter that's contained in our staff report and, and entered into the record. So, given that, I can make the recommendation, I make the motion to approve Architecture and Site Application S-11-059 located at 15220 Oak Ridge Way. I can make the findings that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to section 15303 of SEQA, and those findings are in exhibit two. I can also make the required findings that the project is consistent with the residential design guidelines. Again, those findings are in exhibit two. I can make the required considerations as required by section 29.20150 of the Town Code for grant, granting approval of an architecture and site application. Again, those specific findings are in exhibit two, and make motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Seac, because there's a second. Commissioner Talisfor?
I'll second that. I would like to add, though, if I may, to the maker of the motion, that we include as a condition, unless it's already in here, I'll have to ask staff. I didn't look for landscaping, but would we- landscaping, but would we put that in as a condition or?
And what you're requesting is that a...
What I'd like to do, well, the owner did say that he would, they would like to consider adding some larger trees in the front to soften and the house and also to keep it in a more of a rural character.
Just before I call on you, Commissioner O'Donnell, is that acceptable to you, Commissioner Sayak, as the maker of the motion?
Since it sounded like the applicant had no concerns with that, I have no problem with that.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a little bit of a problem with it in that I don't really understand it. As I understood the original conversation, the applicant was willing to put in a tree.
Right.
I've just heard plural trees, so I assume it's one tree. We don't know what kind of tree it is, we don't know where it's going to go. You're saying he can put a tree in somewhere in the front of the house, and that's the addition to the motion. That's fine with me.
It's a tree, or if he wants to put in two, that's fine. I wanted to, just whatever he'd like to do to soften it, that's all. But you know what? I was just looking, and replacement trees are here under Condition Eight. Replacement trees shall be planted, so...
Does Commissioner, does Condition Eight satisfy your concern?
It would as long...
Because we can put into the record that Mr. Hertz, your comments that you would like to see a twenty-four-inch box tree used in the front of the house to replace the pine that's been removed, and if that's satisfied by Condition Eight, perhaps we can move forward that way.
Right, it almost was. The only reason it isn't is that the trees that are going to be planted as screening trees could be considered with Number Eight. So, I would like to additionally add the one tree, twenty-four box. And I think I have the agreement of the applicant.
And Commissioner Sayak, as the maker of the motion?
That's fine.
And Commissioner O'Donnell, is that specific enough?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion made by Commissioner Sayak to approve, seconded by Commissioner Talasfor with the addition of the twenty-four-inch box tree. So, any other comments or discussion with respect to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Are there appeal rights?
Yes, this decision is appealable to the town council. The appeal must be filed within ten days. There is a fee for filing an appeal, and the appeal forms are located upstairs in the town clerk's office.
Did you get that, Ms. Osborne, regarding the appeal? Okay. Okay, we're going to move to item number six, which is 16380 Oleander Avenue, Architecture and Site Application S-12-002. I currently only have one card on this item, none from the appellant. So, if you plan to speak, love to get a card from you. They're located in the back of the benches, so we can have that recorded for minutes. And either Ms. Davis or Ms. Prop, can you remind me that we take things in a different order when we have an appeal? And I'm not sure if that applies when it's a DRC appeal or not. So, is it the applicant who's appealing? We just do it a normal course, even though it's technically an appeal?
Yes, the property owner is the appellant. There is an applicant who's different, that's, it was the designer involved with the project, it was actually the applicant in this case, but the property owner has, is the appellant, and they speak first, and then anyone else can speak, and then they have rebuttal.
Okay, and again, we've all read the report, and I think we understand what the issue is. So, Ms. Davis, is there anything to add to your report before I ask for questions from the commission?
I just wanted to clarify, the findings in Exhibit Two are the findings made by the DRC to approve the application, and the one finding that was added was language regarding the requested waiver to underground utilities. That particular finding is written for granting the waiver, and it's based on the applicant's rationale. So, if the planning commission decides not to grant the waiver, you would not use that particular language that staff drafted.
Questions for Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis, I actually have a clarification question. As I understand our process tonight, we are only considering essentially the added condition of the undergrounding of the utilities, not the house, not the sidewalk, just the undergrounding.
That is what has been appealed by the property owner, is that particular condition. However, when an appeal is filed, anything that is part of the application is subject for discussion.
Okay. With that clarification, are there any questions of staff? Okay, if not, I will call the applicant slash appellant. Mr. Elliott, I presume?
That's me. Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Jim Elliott, and my wife Dana and I are the property owners. We've lived in Los Gatos for about seven years. We have two young daughters who are in third grade and in kindergarten. Thank you again for your time and your consideration on this matter this evening. You know, I'm not here to debate the letter of the law regarding the demolition ordinance. I'm really here to ask for your consideration of a waiver or possibly a compromise or deferral of the underground utilities requirement. We all understand that a mistake was made when too much sheetrock was removed from the exterior rear wall. So, what I'd like to focus on tonight is the spirit of the demolition ordinance. We annexed to the town in good faith and worked meticulously with our architect during the planning phase to stay within the confines of a remodel for a single-story ranch house. It was to our great shock and dismay when we realized our project had been demolished to the point of being considering, being considered to rebuild versus the remodel that it truly is. It should be noted, however, that all the existing exterior wall studs remain and that the sheetrock was in less than ideal condition when removed. As a result of this mistake, we're now being required to put in utilities underground. Part of the charm of the character, or part of the character and charm of the Blossom Manor neighborhood is well-established. Having been in existence for many years, it is quaint and rural. More than ninety-nine percent of the houses, including new construction in county areas, are serviced by above-ground power. The lack of sidewalks and the presence of power poles with power lines add to the rural and rustic characteristics of the neighborhood. Our neighborhood is the antithesis of closely-packed stucco tract homes typical of many new developments. My wife and I circulated a petition that was signed by fourteen of our neighbors in the immediate vicinity who objected to the following. Number one is creating noise and inconvenience by trenching through and ruining smooth and well-maintained asphalt to bury a single power line that has been in service for about sixty years. The end result of moving a single power line simply does not justify the means. And number two is forcing a change in the aesthetic character of our neighborhood. I understand, again, the letter of the law, but would implore you not to imply it unilaterally and without taking everything into account. In short, I'm requesting that you apply the spirit of a remodel by maintaining the aesthetic characteristics of a neighborhood when that was our original intent. We're here because a mistake was made. Plans were originally submitted and approved as a remodel, not as a rebuild. And to be fair, we're not a developer looking to build fifty houses, nor did we conscientiously or consciously scrape our property to the dirt to build a four-thousand-square-foot monster home. This is a relatively modest and simple eight-hundred, eight-hundred-and-fifty-foot addition and a remodel where some exterior sheetrock was mistakenly removed, far from the requirement for a substantial remodel that would normally trigger the underground power requirement. In closing, I would like to emphasize that real citizens and real families are impacted by the proceedings today and therefore would humbly request your support of this appeal. As a compromise, we would also be open to a deferral agreement, a deferral improvement agreement, much like what was offered to us to mitigate the sidewalk in lieu of fee. This would allow a more holistic and collaborative approach to looking at this from a community-wide perspective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Commissioner Bujoir.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Just so I understand exactly what we're talking about, when I was out visiting your property, which, they say the nearest power pole is one-hundred-and-sixty linear feet from your property. There were several power poles around, can you tell me which one is the closest one that would be in question? Is it the one across Orange?
It's currently serviced by a, what I understand is a support pole across the street on Orange, but a transformer does not exist there.
Okay, so what, what is the, where is the pole located that you would have to connect to?
So, that's where I'm going to have to turn to my architect. I was not present when PG&E was there.
Okay, sir, would you introduce yourself to us for the record, please?
Certainly. Mike Rowe, 108 Santa Cruz Avenue. The pole in question is farther down Orange Blossom, about one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-sixty feet down the street.
Further away from the intersection?
To the south, yes.
To the south, yeah.
Yeah. The pole directly across the street was already used for the house that was built under the town jurisdiction. It's also been consumed with climbing ladders, which I understand, talking to the PG engineers, it's required even though they use cherry pickers nowadays. But the, the poles, they're only allowed to use so many quadrants of each pole, and that one's already been consumed. The other two that are closer to the property do not have transformers, as Mr. Elliott has stated. So, the nearest available pole with a transformer is down the street on Orange Blossom.
Mr. Rowe, there's been a handy visual put up there behind you. Would you take the microphone with you and show us the property in question and the poles that you're talking about?
And if I could add to that, if you could show how, the configuration of how it would go underground?
Certainly, certainly. This is the power pole directly across the street where this house that was built in Los Gatos is utilizing. There's a pole right here, which does not have a transformer, the pole right here, which does not have a transformer, and where the current support is for the drop that currently comes across to the property. Here is the pole that would need to be utilized, and they would have to come entirely up this here and over into the, into the house underground. So, they'd be cutting up the side of the street in front of all these properties, and then across the street into the location of the main panel.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Mr. Rowe, can I ask you to go back for a second and make sure that we all know which is 1638 Oleander on the map?
Right, right here.
Thank you.
On the corner.
Okay, just for clarification for the record. Commissioner Talasfor.
Maybe you wanted to stay there, I don't know, but my question is, can you tell us, because this is a visual problem, as I see it, how, where was the wire connected prior to this? From the house to what pole, and how did, how was that? He said that's where it would be. Was that already asked, and I missed it? I thought he was showing us, I'm sorry, I thought you were showing us where it would be underground.
No, so the current, the current pole right there is where the overhead drop currently exists, but the pole that supports that drop is only for support. There's no, the service lines run down the street.
Sorry?
That's okay.
Any other questions for either Mr. Elliott or Mr. Rowe? Commissioner Sayak.
I'm not sure who it'll go to, so let me ask it. You mentioned a deferral program. Is this a, an issue that you've discussed with staff yet?
We were also originally required to pay a sidewalk in lieu of fee, and given that the manor does not have sidewalks, we're also appealing that. We did reach an agreement with the Planning Commission prior to this to do what's called a deferral agreement fee whereby, in the event that the entire neighborhood, is my understanding, decides to put in sidewalks, we would therefore be part or required to pay our fair share. So, what I'm proposing as a compromise is if we were to look at this holistically and at the neighborhood level of going underground power where we could do it all in concert and in lockstep, I would be open, my wife and I would be open to having a similar resolution to the underground power requirement.
Before Ms. Prop says anything, let me see if there's Commissioner questions. Okay, Ms. Prop.
So, just to clarify, that question is, at the time of the project approval at DRC, the applicant was also required under the subdivision regulations in the Town Code to provide street sidewalk gutter, and there is a provision in the Town Code that allows the Director of Public Works to enter, approve, and then the applicant enters into a deferred improvement agreement with the town such that they can, there are triggers, they're still required to do the curb sidewalk gutter, but at a later date, and there were triggers in this agreement. The problem with the underground ordinance is it didn't give that discretion to staff, and so it has to come before the deciding body to either waive that requirement, or in this case, the applicant has indicated that they would be amenable to deferral. In the case of the ordinance, the Planning Commission could make that decision, but staff couldn't make that decision at their level.
Thank you, Ms. Prop. Questions for Mr. Elliott or Mr. Rowe, not staff questions. Any questions for either of those gentlemen? I don't see any, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have only one other card on this matter, that's from Mary Roach.
She has a question.
I think she has a question of staff, and so we're going to do that later, because you don't have to stand at the podium while we ask questions from staff.
Thank you very much.
Only of you.
Good evening, I'm Mary Roach. I've lived just off this map over...
Where's that laser pointer?
Anyway, I'm just, I'm just at the corner. I've been within two houses of the Elliott's property for, oh, close to thirty years now. Moved in, the aesthetics of the, of the territory is definitely country, rural. My vegetable garden is right there on Cherry Blossom. And I am in support of this not, this power pole, power line not being put underground, although, yes, I would love the whole manor to be wire-free and, you know, improve our vision, especially of our beautiful hills, but it seems to me that this is a very large burden to put on one property owner. It impacts many properties in the area because it's already torn up the walkway to the house across the street where the pole is, and it was like, it just suddenly descended on the people, and I haven't spoken to them about it, but I was appalled. I wouldn't want to come home and suddenly find, you know, several feet of my front walkway to the front door happily dug up without even by your leave or by the way. What really bothers me, and I want to bring forth, is that the manor, as we commonly call it, the Blossom Hill Manor population has repeatedly voted about annexation to Los Gatos, and you've been, Los Gatos has been rejected so many times that no longer may we be put to the vote. And now I learned from this proceeding and the previous one that there was one section of the right-of-way along that section of Oleander that was, quote, annexed into Los Gatos. So, now when remodeling is being done, the associated property, just on that little stretch of street, goes into Los Gatos, and then we have all the rules and regs of Los Gatos, and now I'm, my property is within the influence of Los Gatos. And there was never a notice to me that there was a section of the street just two houses away annexed into Los Gatos. I don't like, I am suspicious, because it's like creeping around and grabbing one inch at a time and then making people pay for sidewalks. It's definitely not in the character of our section of town, and you're making them pay and making them do things for power lines, and, oh, yeah, all these power lines, then it goes down and up and over again, and you've got this weird holding. It makes economic more sense to do it all or don't do it. And since you can't, you don't have a deferral unit in there, I don't, aspect in the law, I don't know whether that can be done, but it's a very big burden on one family. It disrupts a large area. It does, it just smacks of, Los Gatos is grabbing us inch by inch by inch. Will we or will we voluntarily join you?
And we're even going to cut you off because your time is up.
Okay.
Are there any questions? No, is there any questions for Ms. Roach?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other cards, so if you want to speak on this subject, please fill out a card and come up and introduce yourself, and do so. If you don't, I'm going to ask Mr. Rowe and Mr. Elliott, you have the opportunity to come back up and say something. You need not do so. If you choose not to, I'd ask one of you to come up and say, "We choose not to."
We choose not to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. But I have a question from Commissioner Smith for one of you.
Mr. Elliott, it's fine. In your letter, you indicated that the cost would be between ten and twenty thousand dollars, which is a big range.
Indeed.
And that those costs were given to you by whom?
I got an initial discussion from talking to my contractor of what would cost to potentially trench something out like that and then move the power lines, and his estimate was depending on, on how much the trenching fee was going to be, it was going to be in the range of ten to twenty thousand. It's not something that he's normally privy to, so it's out of his realm of expertise, but it's significant.
The reason why I was asking the question is, if you're, if it costs twenty thousand dollars to do it, it actually could be done then for all the neighbors on that street for twenty thousand... for $20,000? I mean, I'm just taking the high end, or just your little line? That's, I just wanted clarification for the future.
That would just be for my, to get to my house alone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for either Mr. Rowe or Mr. Elliott? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And first ask commissioners, do they have any questions of staff? Commissioner Sayak, did you have a question?
Um, just wanted clarification from the town attorney. So, um, Ms. Prop, you did say that the deciding body can utilize the deferral program if we so choose to do so?
You, you'd have to make findings to do that. There is no deferral program for undergrounding. So it, it wasn't contemplated that that was something that was, um, certainly written into the code, there's certainly nothing that prohibits it, but, um, just like you'd have to make findings if you determine that this applicant is, the appellant is entitled to a waiver, you'd have to make findings to support that type of a, uh, decision by this body.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I wanna make a vote. I'm gonna make a motion that, um, in considering the waiver request and the supporting data, we would like to, rather than find the enforcement unreasonable under all circumstances, modify the requirements as it says in our report, as deemed appropriate. And this motion would, by its motion, deem it appropriate to have the, um, appellant, uh, enter into a deferral agreement similar to the other deferral agreement, that is, at such time as a, a significant number of the neighbors have to underground the utilities, then this property also would do that. That language may not track the existing, and I would be happy to make it track the existing deferral agreement, but as I read your report, which is Section 2750, 025, Pren 3, we apparently have the right to modify the requirements as appropriate. So, uh, it, it appears to me, just background for the motion, the trenching of this distance would, seems unreasonable to me. The impact on the neighbors seems unreasonable. Uh, I think it is a worthwhile thing to have, um, underground lines, but I think that not singly, unless there is a program to bring others in. So that would be the motion.
So we have a motion to, I guess it's grant the appeal with a modification as stated by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second? Commissioner Bourgeois?
Yeah, I'd like to second the motion. I'd also like to add, uh, my opinion to the, to the evidence here. As required by Section 2750, 025, we have to make a finding that it's unreasonable, and I think Commissioner O'Donnell did a good job of that. I'd like to add that, uh, it would also, I think, although we're all in favor of generally undergrounding utilities, in this location, does not result in an appreciable aesthetic change at the great inconvenience of several neighbors who have nothing to do with this, so I think it's an undue hardship on the surrounding neighbors, so, and they, they object to it. So, um, I would heartily second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bourgeois. Commissioner Tausfer, you had a comment?
Just that I would support this motion. I think anything else in this case would be unreasonable. Mistakes are made, but, you know, in this case, I truly believe that, and it seems that you were very forthright with it, and, uh, as Mr. Commissioner Bourgeois said, it's not really going to afford us any, um, a huge visual change.
Commissioner Erickson?
It's a question for the chair. Is it okay for me still to ask a question of the staff, since I was prompted from doing that by?
Yes, because you asked so nicely.
So there's another property directly across the street that was, as I understand, annexed into the town as a function of it having a significant change in the, a demolition. There's one, two, three, uh, parcels down on Oleander also. There are seven or eight on Lilac that all have been annexed into the town. In tho, and in those cases, and I apologize for not asking this before the meeting, um, in those cases, are, are there instances of deferrals, or, or have all of those, because they presumably were not done as a group, they were done one by one as they came up? Were, were there deferrals in any case, or were there requirements enforced on all of those properties?
Anytime it's a new residence, if it was a tear-down and rebuild of a new residence, it would have been required? And, and I don't, have not seen any exceptions made in those cases.
I know, I know the one directly across the street was a tear-down and rebuild, just by having walked by there while it was going on. I don't know that any of the rest of them, I don't believe any of the rest of them were, but, so we, in the neighborhood, we haven't granted deferrals in any other cases.
And typically, the town only annexes when it's a tear-down, rebuild. It has to be a pretty significant project to require annexation with a project, otherwise it would have occurred in the county. And the county apparently has an underground ordinance, but doesn't necessarily apply it uniformly, because if you drive around the neighborhood, there's a lot of overhead power lines.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, the report I read said that had he not taken off some of the, of the siding and the wallboard, or whatever you wanna call it, sheet rock, it would have fallen into the proper category. So, we knew going in, I believe, what was intended. There was a mistake made, so, uh, that's the way I look at it. And I would also say, the estimate of $10,000 to $20,000, I had to underground in, in my former house, it was across the street. That's all that had to be done. It cost in excess of $3,000, which is fine. I mean, that, that, that's in the town, and eventually that whole block will be, but I'm just saying that the costs sound in the ballpark to me. And to have this gentleman pay $10,000 to $20,000 under these circumstances, uh, seems, because of the particular physical situation, very unreasonable, so.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor to grant the appeal essentially, uh, made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Bourgeois. Does anyone else have a comment on the motion? Uh, Commissioner Sayak?
Just a question of staff. Since there is no deferral program, do we then, assuming this motion gets approved, then staff will work out the details of how that will work?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and just for clarification from the Planning Commission and the maker of the motion is, there was a trigger on the other improvements, and I'll defer to the engineers if they recall what those triggers might have been, um, but if you're in agreement, then we'll make those consistent.
Yes, as I understand the triggers, it would relate to other, at the ti, at such time as more uniformly the requirements for the sidewalks and gutters were to go into effect, then this property would also have to do it. And I'm saying at such time as at least the adjacent neighbors have to underground, then this property would too.
Commissioner O'Donnell, and further, as I understood it, you were intending your motion to track the triggers that are in the sidewalk deferral, correct?
That's correct.
Um, any other comment on the motion? I actually have a comment. I'm gonna support the motion because I think it's reasonable, however, um, my issue is that I'm a huge advocate of undergrounding, and if we don't start somewhere, we're not gonna start. So, if every time there's a requirement for undergrounding, everyone comes in and says, "Well, we have poles, so why do it?" We'll never have undergrounding. So, I would like us to think about doing something proactive to get undergrounding. So, if we grant waivers, which is reasonable in this case, I, I just don't think we'll ever get undergrounding. That's my problem, but I will support the motion. So, Commissioner O'Donnell?
My understanding that we do regularly require undergrounding, such as my house, which is clearly with, was clearly within Los Gatos. I, and I totally agree with the chair. I don't think this case represents the normal case that we deal with, but I, I would agree with you, if, if it were, we're always gonna make exceptions. I wouldn't do that either, but my observation was, one, I had to underground, I did it. Then my neighbor had to underground, he did it. And I have a belief that everybody in my neighborhood at such times they fall into that, will do it. This is so strange because he's surrounded by the county. Most of Los Gatos, at least in my experience, doesn't have quite that problem.
Okay, so we have a, Commissioner Sayak?
One other thing I wanted to comment on, um, because otherwise, I, I agree with both what you and Commissioner O'Donnell had said about undergrounding, but in this particular case, it's not, it's not a clean waiver. We're, it's a compromise. We're asking that, yes, the demolition did occur, it's technical, these are the ramifications, but, in the spirit of compromise, instead of requiring $20,000 right now and creating havoc upon all the neighbors, we're creating this deferral program, so that consequence will eventually happen, but it's just not gonna be at this current expense. So, so I just want to make it clear that it's not a complete waiver, as far as I understand.
That's as I understand the motion. Any other comments on the motion? Okay, uh, I'm gonna call the question then, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes seven to nothing, and...
Could I interject?
Yes.
To the chair, I did not vote in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, aye you oppose, or nay you oppose? You're confusing me. I'm sorry. So, the motion carries, six to one, Commissioner Erickson opposing. Are there appeal rights to an appeal?
No, no, no. Go ahead, go ahead.
Are there, do we have? Ms. Bailey? Ms. Davis? Anyone? Appeal rights?
Yes, the action is a...
I just wanna clarify, from, um, Planning Commissioners on future projects similar to this, how, what should staff do? Because this is gonna be, this is the first one, and in the past, we have asked the applicant to do exactly this, and they do follow what we asked them for. So, we just need new directions here in the future, because it will come up now that this has been approved.
Thank you, and so what we'll do is, we will put this on a future agenda to discuss undergrounding, rather than take it ad hoc right now. So, Ms. Bailey, can you make sure that on one of our future agendas, we have an item to discuss undergrounding and direction to the staff with, with regard to that? Okay? Okay?
Um, this decision is appealable to the town council. Um, the appeal must be filed within 10 days. There is a fee for filing an appeal, and the appeal forms are located upstairs in the town clerk's office.
Okay, that ends the substantive, if you will, portion of our agenda. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you very much.
That's our job. Thank you for coming. Uh, our next item is a report from, uh, Community Development Department. Ms. Bailey?
Um, yes, I have some updates from the town council meeting of March 5th. They did some numerous things. Um, one is that the town council did adopt a vision statement for the North 40. I can read it to you, or I can email it to you, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, let me ask if everybody's read it. It was, it was in the paper. I'm, I'm seeing nods all around.
Okay, and, um, so we're looking at possible dates to schedule the next North 40 Advisory Committee meeting, and, um, at this time, we don't have any information of whether or not Grosvenor will be continuing with the application.
And to clarify for members of the commission, I've asked, um, Ms. Bailey to give us regular North 40 updates, so that we're all apprised of what's going on or not going on, so we'll make that a regular part of our agenda, for those of you that aren't on the General Planner Advisory Committee. Anything further?
Yes. The council also ratified the 2007, 2014 housing element, and they did make some minor changes, and one change that the Planning Commission is probably most interested in, and if you were on the General Plan Committee tonight, you know what that is, that they removed the north, or excuse me, Ditto's Lane from the affordable housing overlay zone, one of the sites. And, um, the General Plan Committee will need to discuss then where to relocate those lost units. And the last thing is that the, um, town council, um, developed, adopted a resolution regarding the state density bonus and the town's below-market price program. There were some issues with Riviera Terrace on that, and so there was a resolution to clarify that. And the policy is to not apply the town's density bonus general plan policy when an applicant requests the state density bonus program on residential development projects.
I appreciate that, as a member of the general plan, we were struggling with the double-counting issue, so, thank you very much. Um, thank you, Ms. Bailey, that's all. Now is the time for commission matters, if anyone wants to raise something. Commissioner Sayak?
Um, I just wanted to share with commissioners that I recently learned that Ray Davis, also known as Citizen Ray, has recently passed away. Um, I know many of us remember him as a almost permanent fixture of our Planning Commission meetings, and, um, whether or not we agreed or disagreed with his comments and his delivery, I, I think we can all agree that his presence and his advocacy was, is certain, is one thing that will always be remembered when we think of Los Gatos politics, so, so I just wanted to share that news, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayak. Anyone else? I actually have something, and I'm gonna throw it out for consideration. Um, it's just come to my attention through various sources, that with respect to downtown, and I'm talking about North Santa Cruz, and the various new things that we've recently approved, outdoor dining, seating, um, gas heaters, sandwich boards, posters that are signs on top of signs, that maybe there ought to be some reexamination of either our current commercial design guidelines to just clean them up and address the issues that we face in, um, applications that come before us, because right now, we, I mean, we have guidelines, but we haven't really sat down and gave them a hard review. And because of various issues with economics and whatever else, we don't have a very strict enforcement. We're relying on complaints. So, uh, I just wanted to bring it up as putting it before the commission as something that we may wanna agendize, we may wanna talk about, people may not be interested, people may be interested, but, uh, I wanted to throw it out there as part of our record for tonight's meeting. And so if anybody has any thoughts on that, I invite it. Commissioner Tausfer?
Um, I would, I would very much like to explore that a little more, only because I've had, I've actually had several residents approach me about the plethora of eating outdoors, which is great in our town, but that perhaps there needs to be a little more enforcement, not enforcement, that's the wrong word, um, just a little, something to, uh, guidelines, maybe, that maybe are not included specifically in the, uh, in the, uh, commercial that we have for downtown, especially the historic area, that just would perhaps pull together the variety in some way. You know, and I don't even know what I'm, I have to examine that, but, yes, it's, a lot of people have been talking to me about that, and I think especially, there's like a lot of, um, those sandwich signs that end up in the middle of the sidewalks as you're coming down, and people are having to move them. So, you know, there's, what is that? Is that okay?
Those, those aren't...
And, and there's other, you know, like there's trays of, of...
The A-frames are not permitted, and that's something, it's a code, co-compliance issue that we need to pursue.
Okay.
It's based on a complaint-only basis.
So it's just something that, uh, we are increasingly seeing, so Commissioner Smith?
You know, I'd like to, uh, comment that I think there was a relaxation of the rules and regs that are on the books now during the economic downturn, in hopes that those businesses that could find a less expensive way of advertising, maybe posters or banners, could benefit from this relaxation. However, I, you've added something besides posters and sandwich, um, boards, you know, gas heaters and outdoor seating, et cetera, so it seems to me it's become broader than maybe where the, where the, even the staff thought we were headed, so, um, I'm not sure the procedure for a, a further review, because there have been changes downtown. There's certainly more restaurants, for instance, so maybe the outdoor seating needs to be updated, and maybe the, you know, the signage just needs to be enforced. So, so I think there's competing, um, information here that maybe needs to have more analysis in, in what does need to be fixed and what needs to just be enforced.
Is there enough interest that we could reach a consensus that at least a designate or your chair, whoever could explore the process to look at this with staff? And I'm seeing people nod their head, so, okay, okay. So, uh, yeah, one, one of us will try to do that, but I, I want to bring it up because I think it's increasingly, certainly something that I'm aware of and that I hear people talk about, so, um, Ms. Bailey, you may be hearing from me, or... So, Ms. Bailey, you may be hearing from me or me and another person regarding that issue. Okay, any other commission matters? Okay, thank you very much all for a very good meeting. And we're adjourned.